...of the City Council, which are not posted on the agenda. Public criticism of the City Council, commission boards and agencies is not prohibited, and the council cannot take any actions. I see here this evening, we have one hand raised. Last name S Y E D.
Yes, my name is Duriya Sayed. Should I start my comment?
Yes, your time begins now.
Okay, so my name is Duriya Sayed. Good evening. I am an outreach analyst for the Department of Insurance, California Department of Insurance, and I'm with the Community Relations Branch. And I'm just happy to give you update about the work that we have been doing on your behalf. It is the wildfire season, and so I want to touch bases on our safer from wildfire framework and interagency partnership between Insurance Commissioner Laura and the emergency response and readiness agencies in Governor Newsom's administration. So we are working right now with CAL FIRE, we're working with COW, yes, we are working with the public utilities and Governor's Office of Planning and Research right now. So just wanted to come and let you know that this is one of our program where Commissioner Laura is using all the available tools to improve insurance for our communities. And it's a ground up approach where wildfire resilience has three layers of protection. We can call it SFW 123 plan. Number one, to protect the structures such as making sure roof and vents are up to code. Number two, immediate surroundings such as brush too close to your home. And the number three is involve your entire community to prevent wildfires from catching and spreading to other homes and businesses in the neighborhood. This includes enhanced infrastructure and programs like Firewise. So basically, good news is that last week Insurance Commissioner Laura submitted his insurance pricing regulation to the California Office of Creative Law. And we are hoping that all this process will be done by January 2023. So we just wanted to, I just wanted to be here to remind you that Department of Insurance is here for all your constituents' needs and all your needs. And just go and visit our website. We have live chat available. We call right away. If we don't, if we don't pick up your phone, our response time is two minutes. So just wanted to know that we are here as a dedicated experts staff to help you through any insurance need, whether it's auto, homeowners or fire related. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sayed. And Larry Olson, each time you unmute, it's creating an echo for the rest of us. I know you're trying to figure out the features there. Thought I'd let you know.
Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yes, and we are on a public comment. Ms. Sayed, if you could remove the, the hand sign just by clicking on it again. Thank you for addressing the council. And Mr. Olson, do you, would you like to go next under public comment?
Thank you. I seem to have a reverberation or some sort in my sound, and so I hope you can hear me. I appreciate, thank you. I'll try it again. I appreciate the fact that I be able to speak tonight. I'm sorry after last that I wasn't able to be there. We are of course Mendocino County Provincial Coalition, and we are seeking to bring the retail license ordinance to the city of Willets. We appreciate that you have an ad hoc committee that will be meeting and speaking with, I understand, will be public, and we will have executives there to answer questions. He actually asked someone from the council to be able to be as part of the program. They certainly will too. It's one project, it's one that we feel is very valuable to not only the kids of Willets, but also citizens long term. And to reiterate how much we have the opportunity to present, we will do our best to answer all your questions to bring it to satisfaction. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Do we have anybody else during public comment that would like to address the council? Anybody on the phone? Okay, having heard no additional comments, I'm going to close public communication and move on to, we have no public matters or enactment of ordinances before us, but we do have a consent calendar. We have the City Council minutes of August 24th, and we have a resolution ratifying and extending for an additional 30 days, approval of continuing virtual City Council, commission and committee meetings. Item C is to approve a contract with Michael Serrato's Cleaning Service for janitorial services at City Hall and Public Works Engineering Department in an annual amount not to exceed 22,320 per year for fiscal years 2022 to 2023 and 2023 to 2024. And our last item on the consent calendar, D, is to approve a contract with David Edgar, also known as Mendocino Janitorial, for janitorial services at the Willets Police Department in annual amount not to exceed 19,800 per year for fiscal years 2022 to 2023 and 2023 to 2024. I'll bring it back to council and entertain a motion, or if you'd like to pull and have a discussion on any items, please let me know.
Madam Mayor, I just want to inject here. I noticed that Member Strong has joined the meeting, and I just want that acknowledged for the minutes.
Thank you. We can't hear you.
I would like to pull B for a quick comment, and I would move the rest of the agenda, or the rest of the consent calendar.
I second that. Larry?
Okay, we have a motion for items A, C, and D on the consent calendar. All right, I'll open it to the public. Is there any public comment on these items? Mad, you have your hand up?
I'm having trouble with this technology here. I just wanted to suggest that we ask for public comment before we do the motion in general. I mean, I don't think it matters on this one, but in general, if we have an item where there are public people wanting to just comment, that we wait to do a motion until after we've heard to public comment in the future?
I'll defer to our attorney, Jim Lance, for Robert's Rules of Order. Is there a need for a motion before we have discussion, or what are procedurals? Can't hear you.
I just said, I believe that the procedural rules are discretionary and not mandatory and is at the mayor's discretion.
Okay. Any objection from council members if we change procedure and do public comment, then entertain a motion? All right, having heard none, we'll, we'll make that procedural change. We do have a, a motion on the table to approve consent calendar item A, C, and D. We have a first and a second. I'll open it up for public comment. Mad, if you could lower your hand by clicking on the hand again, that would be great. Okay, I don't hear any public comment. And so I will bring it back to Dolores for a roll call.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. And now we will revisit consent calendar item number B, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, I, I could meet in person, you know, it's one of those, but I guess I wanted to outline a situation. I just got back from the league. I developed a cold. I, I actually tested myself and tested negative, so I, but I had a little bit of a scratch when I attended my meeting, my LAFCO meeting on Monday, and they, they've adopted a hybrid process. So you, I was intent on driving down there, but I told them out of an abundance of caution and that I didn't want to be coughing at that meeting. I, I, I basically attended online, and that worked out good. I guess my concern for us is, in this age of COVID, I could see myself coming down with a scratchy throat right before one of our meetings and probably calling Brian and saying, "I'm not coming in," if we made in person. And I know that we've talked about a hybrid or whatever, and I guess I wanted to outline that's a, a situation that may come up. And either we make allowances or, or we, we figure that out. And I just wanted to have that discussion. I'm prepared to, I guess, make a motion on this, but obviously, I wanted to throw that out to the group.
Stransky?
I agree with Jerry. I, I'm really ready for us to get back together. And, you know, I don't know how we're going to handle if, if you have a low vice, low virus or whatever, but I'm really ready to get back together. So that's one thing that I would really like to look at.
And I, I agree. I have been ready to return. I, like Jerry, have a head cold. I, I tested myself, and mine is in fact just a head cold. And at City Hall today, I attended with a mask on for my meeting with City Manager Bender. City Manager, do you want to give us kind of where we're at if we were to, is a, is a hybrid viable? Or what, how would you envision, what are our options for returning?
Yeah, I mean, a hybrid is one option that's on the table. It would be, you know, we're just mastering teams here, so we would, you know, add some complexity to our system. So essentially, what a hybrid is, you're running simultaneous meetings. So you're running it in person and then the virtual session. So you would need to kind of manage them and manage the flow of communication and participants through those two venues. You know, I, we, we looked at it. It's some investment. We're not quite sure that we're ready for it, or it's in the, it's the best option for us, the best fit with our scale and the way the community or the council chambers are set up. That's one of the, the limiting factors. You know, I think at this time, I think it's either we meet in person, we establish ground rules, and you do have that preference. You do have that ability to require full masks, mask wearing all the time during the session. If anyone is, appear to be physically ill, they can be asked to remove, or we just continue with this virtual setting until the council decides it's, it's, it's time.
All right, having heard that, Councilmember Gonzalez, do you have any follow up thoughts?
Again, I just kind of wanted to highlight the, the LAFCO thing. I, I guess I would be in a situation where if we did as a group decide to come back, I, I just would want to be in a situation where maybe we could hold something if it was something we wanted everybody's input on for another meeting, or the event somebody's sick. I, I don't want, I mean, in the pre-COVID, I would have shown up with a little bit of the sniffles and, you know, coughed into my elbow and done one of those sort of numbers and told everybody, "Hey, look, I'm not going to shake your hand, et cetera." And the age of COVID, I probably, under these circumstances, Monday I would have worn a mask. Today I feel fine, but, but, you know, same thing, my allergies act up, et cetera, I probably would wear a mask. And so I'm, I'm open to it. I, I would like Mad and Greta to also weigh in on it too. But I wanted to kind of throw that out there, just that I also want to do with enough time that city staff can arrange the council chambers, et cetera. And I know we're having some constructions done, and things are kind of all over the place still, so I want to make it easy for staff. And either we set a date out, and then maybe the meeting in November or something, first meeting in November is something we shoot for. And then we watch the health, and if it, if the Omicron hits us hard or something, and we have to go back to this, I would want to keep our options open. And those are my thoughts.
All right, Councilmember Strong, was there anything you want to add?
I believe she's logging back in.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, am I on?
You're, you're, you're on, Mad. I was trying to give you an opportunity to weigh in on this discussion because I didn't hear your voice yet.
Yeah, I'm having trouble with this, this forum, the teams, whatever it is. For right now, I'm having a horrible echo on the line, so it's hard to finish this. And because of that, I'm sort of more eager to go in person. But I think that the, prior to this was much more manageable. I, I think it'll be either way.
Your microphone's off, Brian.
I just want to say, the City Hall's going through some renovations, and, but that's not going to detract, detract our ability to accommodate a in-person meeting. We can get the council chambers up and running, and we can get you in there. And like I said, some ground rules, mask wearing, social distancing, limit capacity, open up the doors, put some fans in to get cross ventilation going. We could try it. And, you know, maybe we think about the first meeting in October as the kickoff point. I don't know. We're, no one from staff here is, is, you know, we're, we're anxious to get reconvened as well.
I'd like to see us returned in person on October 12th and have it as a target date and collect some input, have our city manager collect some input from individual council members as to any little things that they would like us to do. For me personally, I think just if somebody presents with illnesses or of course is tested positive, that, that you, you don't attend, or if you're negative and you have other symptoms, then you self attest and you wear a mask. For me, that, that's sufficient. If others have other requests, then please make them known to City Manager Bender so that maybe we can move forward. Does the October, what was it, October 12th meeting as a, as a, as a tentative date to return to in person, is that something that council could, could agree to? I'm seeing nods of yes. Strong?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if it could also be hybrid in that if somebody wanted to attend virtually, could they? The, and somebody could be council member or, is that feasible?
It's feasible, but it will take some doing because basically what we're doing here is, is recording, we're all in the same forum. What we would need to do is, like I said, run two separate meetings. One is the virtual, and then one is the in-person. So we would have to take a look at it and then figure out how we would do it. It's, it's, there's some software that we would need to acquire and implement.
So let's make it a goal that we return to in person on October 12th, and you can report to us on how we are doing in terms of reaching that goal the next time we meet on September 28th. Does that seem fair? And for now, we have the consent item B before us. Jerry, I do believe you made a, a motion in your statement, so I'd be looking for a second on the motion to approve item 5B.
I accept, I will do that. I second it.
Thank you, Councilmember Stransky. Would anybody from the public like to address us on this matter? All right, having heard none, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. All right, thank you all. Monthly activity reports, there's a business license report for August 2022 attached to the agenda packet. We have no commissions, agencies, and authority business to discuss today. So I'll move on to item number eight, which is City Manager Report's recommendation, with the first item being a discussion and possible action to change 1.0 FTE Office Assistant 3 to 1.0 FTE Administrative Specialist. I'll turn it over to City Manager Bender.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know, it just feels, when we consider, or we start talking about hybrid meetings, it makes me a little nervous. It's, it's kind of the wrong term, but we'll, we'll get, we'll get a plan in place, and we'll get this council in front of people, and we'll do our business that the, the public expects us to. So, all right, so what we're looking at here today for the benefit of the council is somewhat of a staffing item. You will see Finance Director Orozco is present to back me up on this. It's his department, but I wanted to kick this off and kind of explain, once again, what we're doing and what we have done with the finance department. So the finance department expansion and reconfiguration was tied to the City Hall renovations. We brought the, the finance department up front, made it very visible, increased its visibility to the public through the new service counters. One is open now, the other one will be open relatively soon. And so you had the physical setting, but also is the workflow and the, how we are managing the staff and how those staff assignments are taking place. And it is, it's kind of a working model right now. We have covered a lot of ground, we have learned a lot of things, we have some great staff that are working with us, and, and, and we couldn't do this without their support and their commitment, and with Manny's commitment as well overseeing everything. It is, it's a big learning curve, but we're getting there. Saying that, unfortunately, we did have to go through some staffing changes, and that opened up an opportunity to take another critical look, and this was done with Manny's input and then Kathy Moorhead, the Assistant City Manager, with her knowledge of what is happening at the front counter over her years' experience in that role, and then myself trying to just pull everything together. So what we're looking at here tonight is, is a request to repopulate a position that the city used to have, and then we removed it with its most recent budget. We didn't, we weren't ready for, we didn't think we were ready for it at that time, but unfortunately, we, or fortunately, we are at that point in time where we could see a need to have this position. Right now, we are configured to have four staff members in the finance department up front at the, in the main office. We need to have a little bit of direction of flow and some guidance and supervision to keep everything in check and to provide the right guidance and feedback to Manny. So Manny is not dedicating his whole time to affairs at the front counter because we have other financial matters that is in his discipline that we need to have him look at. So this is a, a position that, like I said, was presently, was in the past with the, with our organization. It was removed from the budget because we didn't think it was necessary at the time. Now it's here, and I think that's a good thing. We're, like I said, we're just building that capacity and utilizing staff, and I think it's going to get where we need to go. We're, we're still refining this whole approach. And I think it's important to understand, and we wanted to make sure that the council understands the, the role that the finance department has in its new configuration and building checks and balances, which was somewhat missing in the past, and that is something the auditors have always identified in closeout reports to the detriment to our financial structure. So that's real critical, and that is noted. Manny, do you want to jump in and add any comments? Manny, you're off mic. Can you hear me now? I can only hear you guys. Okay, I have got to. You're off mic again.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so beginning of this year, we started noticing some issues. More of my time was being taken away at the front desk in order to be able to cover issues and items that were necessary to cover and, and facilitate the ins and outs and the flows of the, the needs of each of the accounting staff. And one of the issues was is that it was taking away time from the audits and from the future audits that are coming up, which would be the 2021 and 2122 audit. We're going to be hammering those out within the next month and going full bore into an RFP and, and just plenty of other things, including also adding in payroll. And in order to keep the ball rolling and moving forward while also putting the attention that is necessary in the front desk, we wanted to be able to kind of offer this up and try and have it to where small problems that need a supervisory input would be handled and administered at the front desk. And anything that had needed to muster up to my level, then it would be better off that I'm able to focus on the other things that are going on within the, within the department at the higher levels than dealing with the stuff that happens on a daily day, daily basis. So that's why our hope is to be able to create a better ease of flow within the department. And my hope is that adding this new position will give us a little bit more efficiencies.
All right, any clarifying questions from council? Gonzalez?
So this again is a reallocation of, you're, you're changing Office Assistant to Administrative Specialist? Is that correct? Okay, that, that's, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, so we're bringing it out a mothball approach, and, and ideally, we want to combine that with the current or the need to fill utility billing position. And in the past, it was held by someone who is assigned to accounts payable. So it's kind of, it's, it's kind of a overlay type of title. So you have the, the basic work responsibilities, and then there's a supervisory type of role that is applied to that, that person. We're not, we don't have the capacity where they're independently just assigned a supervisor role. They have their underlying responsibilities, but they also have some responsibilities when they are not heavily involved in the monthly cycle with billing to provide some guidance, oversight, and direct information back to Manny when his presence is necessary in any different situation at the, the front desk.
All right, since this is a discussion and possible action item, is there anybody from the public that would like to, to comment on City Manager's report? All right, would anybody from the council like to make a motion on this matter?
Gonzalez would like to move.
Thank you. I'll second the motion myself. So we have a first and a second. Any comments before we call for the vote? All right then, we'll call for the vote for possible, or we'll call for the vote for the action to change from 1 FTE Office Assistant 3 to 1 FTE Administrative Specialist. Dolores, roll call.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. All right, 4-0, motion carries. And then it's back to City Manager Bender for your verbal report on your two items.
Actually, I'm going to throw a third item on there, but it's just kind of informational item. So on City Hall renovations, we are in the final leg of trying to close this project out. Staff has been coordinating with the original contractor. We have extension on the schedule, contract schedule. They will be here. It looks like the schedule is set for next week. They're going to be here at least for one day. We asked if they would participate in the change order to fabricate a wall to create a separate office for the city clerk. to fabricate a wall to create a separate office for the city clerk. Essentially, they came back with a very high expense number associated with that. And that was kind of a signal saying they weren't really interested. So, Davy Bowles, the building official, was able to reach out to a couple of local contractors, and we're going to make it happen locally, which is a great thing for us. We're going to finish out the project. So, like I said, next week, next weekend, we have the contract of the original contractor here. They're going to finish out the last remaining items, install the security gates for the service counters, windows. And then we are hoping that the milled countertops are going to be ready for installation by middle of October. Right now, they're in a kiln to dry out and close the pores. So, good stuff there. Once again, we're starting, like I said, we're in the final leg. We're starting to put some more paint on the walls. We're almost moved in with all the offices and the desk arrangements. I think we went through numerous trials and tribulations on setups and layouts and configurations. I think we're there now to maximize the comfort level for staff as well as the workflows. So, just a word to the public that, you know, a couple more weeks, we should be open. We, part of this renovation project has also put some community art and display work in the council, or excuse me, in City Hall, both in the offices and the public space as well. So, that's something that I would encourage both council members and the public to look out, look for in their future visits to City Hall. So, that's renovation project. And then the other item there, update on the athletic field usage. Right now, we're in the deep end of the soccer activities for the youth. And it's great to see all the kids out there getting encouragement and advice and building team spirit as they're practicing and playing soccer. That's great to see. But right now, we recognize that we have limited field space. And there's been a couple of attempts to reconfigure, maybe physically reconfigure the alignment and the configuration of the athletic fields through a planning effort with the other major rec components that we have down in Long East Commercial. But that's a little longer term. But what I wanted to convey to the council right now is that we're looking at a new city policy that would try to accommodate as many users as possible, not necessarily soccer. I would love to see some lacrosse guys out there whacking around with each other with sticks and some field hockey and anything like that. But we want to accommodate as many users as possible. Like I said, it's, you know, we're doing this for the kids and the youth. That's a great thing. But we need to put a better policy together that addresses needs and it gives us the ability to manage the requests. And that's something that I think we've been missing a little bit. So, that's kind of the updates on that. So, I would encourage the council to keep an eye out for that. I'm looking to get that out to you by October so we can have it in place, starting for January in 2023 for new programs. Finally, I just want to take an opportunity here to comment on some actions by the Water Department staff under Justin Virgil, AKA Rowdy, and Scott Herman. They put in some long hours and they were in some questionable, risky situations during the Walker fire in ensuring that the water production facility, the surface water production facility was protected. And they provided assistance to Cal Fire and the Little Lake Fire District personnel as well. So, Drew Galisby was really a star player out there. He put long hours in. He was helping and coordinating fire efforts through Cal Fire and the Little Lake Fire District. So, I think these individuals need to call you out. They, they were a little bit risky. I was concerned about their safety. You know, we don't want to lose any major facilities, but we're not, it's not worth the life of, you know, any staff, city staff personnel and also fire personnel. So, I just want to call them out. On the facility side of it, everything was safe. The fire agencies did a great job in protecting, creating a line of defense around our facility. We recognized that we're going to have to do some tree thinning to enhance protection of that facility. But we rode out that threat well. And just want to convey that to the council. It is operational. We sustained no damages to the facility.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate that you gave a shout out to those three gentlemen who worked really hard to protect this community asset. So, again, this council thanks them for their, for their time, energy, their commitment and all that they've done for the city of Willets. Anything further?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. We have no department recommendations this evening. So, moving on to department monthly reports. Councilmember Strong, did you have a comment about City Manager's report?
I'm having a very technical problem. I think I'm logged in twice. And not everybody is echoed.
You are logged in twice.
I can hardly understand anything. If I'm logged in twice, that might explain it. I don't know.
You are.
If that could be resolved somehow, I have no idea how to do.
You are logged in twice, Madge.
Well, how do I fix that without leaving the meeting?
I'm not sure. We have the department monthly reports. Why don't you take a minute and see if you can log out on one of them while we go through the monthly reports? And then I'll come back to you when we get to council reports. Try closing one of the screens in the upper right corner on the X. And then look on your bottom bar and see if you've got the T. It's got the T in the purple, open on the bottom just one time. And in the meantime, I'm going to go ahead and move on. And if need be, Dolores can replay this back since it is being recorded for you later in terms of the monthly reports. Okay, Madge?
I'm sorry, I completely not understand what you're even saying. I only seem to have one T little icon lit up. So, I don't know if I have another one that I could, you know, log out of without leaving the meeting by mistake. But I think it maybe just stopped echoing. Maybe Dolores just fixed it for me. I don't know.
Your second one is now gone.
Oh, good. All right, thank you very much. I'm really sorry to take your time on that, but.
Man, I really apologize to say this, but I deleted you.
You what?
I deleted you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Deleted your second entry.
That's, that was what I needed, and I just didn't know how to do it myself. So, thank you so much. And I really apologize for taking everybody's time to fix that for me. Thank you.
All right, we're down to one council member, Madge. Strong. All right, moving on to department monthly reports. We'll begin with the airport this evening. Or actually, these are presented at the second meeting of each month. Dolores is nodding, yes. Do we have any departments that would like to add anything since we, since it's an off meeting? I'll just throw it out there. Okay, having heard none, we'll move on to city council announcements, communications, and reports. And I know that Councilmember Gonzalez had a busy, oh. We'll start with Stransky, and then we'll go to Gonzalez. Go ahead, Stransky.
I have mentioned several times about a raise for the council. And I would like to push that, to get it on the council. And maybe I'm the only one that wants that. So, we either need to bring it up or forget it or whatever, but we need to do something about it. Thank you.
Before we move on to Gonzalez, a quick question. Stransky, have you had a conversation with Bender or Lance about? Because I know that there are some limitations. You might consider, I know that the amount of any pay that one can receive in a city, certain sizes, there are some limitations. So, just making sure that we understand those too. Have you had that conversation yet?
No, I just, I just think it's time and, but I will talk with both of them, or at least with Brian first. Thank you.
All right, having heard no further comment, we'll move on to Gonzalez.
Well, thank you. Well, this past week, both City Manager Bender and I went to the Cal Cities League Conference in Long Beach. I got to meet a couple, lots of folks. Actually, it was probably the biggest attendance they've had in several years at this meeting. And I, I actually didn't stay for the last day because traffic was horrendous. And I left, as Brian put out, told me later on that I missed a good luncheon at the end. But I5 apparently had major issues this past week. So, I wanted to get on the road. As it was, it took me out to Lancaster and back onto the 5 to get back. I did attend a couple of pretty good breakout sessions. And I think we had a chance to walk around, talk to some vendors. I actually got educated on water tanks. There was a water tank vendor there, and I think Brian got some info from them. And I learned a little bit more than I knew beforehand on water tanks. And that was just from the vendor part of it. And maybe I won't take up forever on talking about some of the breakout sessions. But needless to say, we share a lot of problems across the state with a lot of the same issues that we're dealing with. And water is one of the biggies all over the state. So, then I did have a LAFCO this Monday. And basically, in a nutshell, LAFCO had, was two workshop items, joint workshops for the Ukiah, City of Ukiah and the Ukiah Valley Sanitation District. They had been in legal, kind of a, I guess the best analogy I could give is something similar to us and Brooktrails. And I think they're pretty much working together now and they're moving forward. Ukiah is in the middle of updating their general plan. And a lot of this has to do with, they cross pollinate the Ukiah Valley with services that they both provide. And I guess they are trying to decide how to move forward as Ukiah and Sanitation District move forward with annexations and realigning services. So, it was very interesting. And that was a workshop item. So, that's all I've got.
Jerry, could you maybe at our next meeting give us a little bit more meat on like, what were some of? I'm curious what some of the topics were there? And if there was any like, if there were any like hot topics with some more details? We want to hear a little bit more about your conference and what you took away from it.
If I may, Jerry, housing, housing, housing.
Housing, okay.
What the state's going to do with their billion dollar surplus? Is that going to be funneled back to the local jurisdictions? Which that didn't seem to drag a lot of interest. And then some of the, some of the more questionable bills that are being introduced or that are on the governor's desk for review and possible signature, there's some actions there. But there was a lot of good discussion related to, Jerry and I attended a meeting on development and impact fees. And that's something we brought back that we agreed that we need to look at here on several fronts. I attended a session on mobile vendors and parklets and the importance on codifying them. But it was also looking at just what, kind of the overall theme was housing, economic development, good governance, making sure council members are informed and their relationship to people like myself, managers, administrators, and key staff. And also, how do you get the media involved? And how do you engage the public through social media platforms? Do you take a very proactive stance and produce material for a release? Good stuff like that. So, I'm more than willing to summarize any of those sessions if the council so choose.
And if I may, Mayor, there was also a breakout on the Paradise Fire and the Santa Rosa Fire, which I think really rang home. And as part of that social media that Brian is talking about, they also talked about managing the message of the social media so that it was coming from the city and not individual council members because of the laws pertaining to social media. Apparently, there's some rules regarding what you can like, not like, those sort of things. And you can kind of get yourself in trouble right away as an individual versus going out via the city. And so, those sort of things, I think we've had some of that in the past with some of our past trainings as council. But it looks like it's becoming more of an issue as more social media gets pushed out there. So.
Councilmember Gonzalez and I attended Mendocino County Housing Meeting. I was curious, Jerry, did you find that some of the conversations that we were having there, that they were having in some of the breakout groups? And did you find anything that like, maybe we had missed in talking about Mendocino County that we should be thinking about?
You know, in a nutshell, what relates to us is that as a state level, there's a big issue with EDUs. And while we may welcome them here, it sounds like in some cities, they have issues with infrastructure and planning them. They're not necessarily against EDUs, but in some areas, it's causing its own issues because of the state making a broad law and it coming back to the community that may not necessarily be able to support the infrastructure that it causes. So, those sort of things that we may have lots of room on our lots up here, whereas in some of the more metropolitan areas, they're kind of built out. And they're lamenting that it shouldn't be a cookie cutter sort of thing because it isn't. So, that's, that was the other issue there.
All right, thank you. That was very helpful. Councilmember Strong?
Yes. I had a meeting last Thursday with the Economic Development Financing Committee. And I think we continue to have a very good loan portfolio. It's very successful and continuing to approve loans and to get federal funds available to us for that. So, that's the main focus of EDFC. But one of the things that came up was the need to coordinate with other economic development entities, not only within our county, but also multi-county. So, SMED, which is the Sonoma Mendocino Economic Development, that agency, I think the primary Mendocino agency that's going to interact there is going to be West Company. But EDFC and West Company are trying to keep lines of communication and collaboration open. So, that was, I think, good news that we're aware of not duplicating the same issue, you know, same tasks and that the county gets the most benefit from both agencies. I think that is the main thing. I would like to make sure we invite Robert Genert. I think we had him not too long ago, but I think it's really good for us to stay in touch with EDFC. The other agency that I will be attending tomorrow is the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority. And we are, you know, in the midst of a transition. And right now, I'm disappointed because we do not have any, anything on paper for tomorrow's meeting regarding the contracting out some of the basic tasks that ENSWA has done in the past. We are very painfully aware that ENSWA is not doing those tasks now out in the remote areas, which includes Willets. We're not all that remote. But the staffing of ENSWA is like totally down to three people. So, there's really, they have retrenched in what we are able to do right now. I had a conversation with Jim Brown, who's the Chair of ENSWA. And thankfully, he is running for reelection and I hope is going to continue as Chair. Because. because his institutional knowledge there is extremely important. And he is working closely with the remaining small staff that we have to keep things going. And he, he and then Tim Erickson from the City of Ukiah are in the midst of negotiating with CNS for what will be happening with the private contracting out of those services. And I want to just emphasize to our board members that, or our city council members, the, a absolute requirement is going to be that CNS restore all of the services out to the other communities, which includes the coast and North County. We, we need, that is an essential part of what Emswa is supposed to do. They haven't been able to do it recently, and that will have to be restored. So tomorrow's meeting is probably just going to be a general discussion, but by the next meeting after that, I hope we actually have a written contract for how these services are going to be provided. And I just also want to mention that with the one exception of the one-time monies that the cities and the county designated for ED, for Emswa, I think about six months ago, maybe to begin, anyway, we did a one-time contribution that has enabled Emswa to get all of the hazardous waste that had been stored at the facility taken to where they're supposed to go. Like the batteries were stacked up like enormous quantities of actually very hazardous material that needed to be disposed of properly. So that one-time contribution enabled us to do that, and it also enabled a little reserve which will allow us to get grant funding because you have to be able to, to pay the grants, you know, after you've actually done the work. And Jim Robbins, who we lost to the City of Ukiah, he is helping Emswa get grants for things that, that have been neglected. And so they're very, very happy that we, that Jim Robbins is now available to help them with grants. So I'm sorry, that's sort of a long report, but I think it's kind of an important one. Emswa in the future should be able to be totally self-financed with grants and tipping fee. And that will be things that will be looked at in this, in this contracting negotiations that are underway right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Strong. I met with City Manager Bender and Councilmember Gonzalez and several other, several other members of the city staff together in Mendocino Housing Planning Group. I'm not sure what the formal name is. City Manager Bender?
It was, it was the Housing Summit, so it was kind of a pulled together joint effort between the municipalities and the county's planning department.
Thank you. I appreciated all of the, the effort that went into facilitating us having an opportunity to really brainstorm on the small and the big ways that we can solve that housing issue within Mendocino County and how each city came together to collaborate, realizing that we all have the same issues. I also attended the meeting up in Brook Trails. It was a, an opportunity for people to come and talk about the need for transit in the Brook Trails area. That was very fruitful. And we'll go before MCOG as part of a report that's going to come to them. I also attended the nine eleven ceremony on Sunday. And always a, an emotional moment to remember nine eleven and the lives that were lost that day. Take a moment to, to honor them. And then lastly, I just wanted to, because I mentioned it to City Manager Bender today, and there have been several members of the community that have brought up this issue, and City Manager Bender's, we're going to talk about it more at a later date, but the increasing number of homeless people that, particularly around the Safeway Shopping Center, along back and behind there where the creeks and the bridges are, it's becoming more of a growing problem. And I'm hearing from more members of the public. So we're aware of that, and we'll, we'll be talking about it more.
Madam Mayor, if I may just contribute to those comments as well. During that discussion, super, super, County Supervisor John Hascheck also was in attendance. So we conveyed our concerns to Supervisor Hascheck and asked, you know, for county assistance and if the county has a thorough viable plan to deal with homelessness, not only throughout the county, but, you know, our concern here in Willetts. So that message was conveyed back to Supervisor Hascheck.
Yes, thank you for adding that in. I had asked Supervisor Hascheck whether or not the shelter was open during the summer, and if it was closed, when would it be reopening for the, for the winter months? So what was the attendance in prior months? Were we at capacity? Just kind of getting a sense of what resources are available throughout the county, and if there's been any changes that could potentially have impacted our community or that will impact our community. And that's all I have to report today. Is there any good in welfare? Go ahead, Strong.
Thank you. So a week from tomorrow, on September 22nd, in the evening, WELL and, WELL is sponsoring an energy forum. It's, the subtitle is Saving Money and Saving the Climate. And the idea is to look at ways people can stop using fossil fuels and save money while they're at it. We have three very good speakers, including Jeff Cyfers of Sonoma Clean Power, Keith Rutledge, and John Sakas. And so I hope people will try to attend. It's going to be exclusively by Zoom, and there are posters around town with the, how you log in. If anyone needs to get in touch with me, I'll let them know the link. And then on October 9th, which is a Sunday, two to five, WELL and the League Women Voters of Mendocino and the Mendocino Women's Political Coalition are sponsoring another election forum. And that will be from two to five on Sunday, the October 9th, at the Little Lake Grange. And we will have spokespeople for Measure O and Measure P. And we will also have, I think, most, if not all, of the seven candidates for the Willetts School Board, which is a pretty hotly contested race there for three seats. So if people want to attend that one, it'll be in person, but we will record it. So if somebody can't be there in person, they can watch it later. Thank you.
All right. And I almost forgot, I will be at the Bucket Challenge at Mendham Mill on all day Saturday and all day Sunday. I'll be there from, my, my slot time is two to four. So if you're looking for some home improvement projects and you need some supplies, head on down to Mendham Mill and support high school boosters. All right. It is 7:30 PM, and with that, I'm going to call for adjournment. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.